Okay, I'd like to call the February 2017 work session of the Board of Education to order. We have something new. We're videoing the work session and this will be played hopefully before the board meeting when it's videoed and comes on the local cable channel. If not, you'll be able to see it on YouTube, I believe. Okay, first item on the agenda, 2016-17, Craig County Schools Calendar Revision Discussion. Superintendent Stefani?
Thank you, Dr. Dobney. Dr. Dobney and fellow board members. Thanks to our little taste of winter in January. We've had another reduction in our buffer of number of school hours in the school year. We're down to the number of hours that would equate to one and a half days of school at the elementary level and we're down to the hours that would equate to one day of school at the secondary level.
Does that include the early college?
No, early college is on a separate schedule and we'll have to study those hours separately and bring that to you if they need it. Been told so far that they've kept the numbers that they're sitting okay right now, so we may not have to revise theirs. So as we look at the second semester, before your next meeting shows up, we'll hit another one of our early release professional development days on February 24th. And so I was just bringing the option to the board that if we wanted to change February 24th to a full day of school instead of an early release day and then May the 5th, because we have two early release days scheduled for May, if we take May the 5th and make that a full day, that would take us to two and a half days worth of hours at the elementary level and two days worth of hours at the secondary level and just might give us just enough buffer to get through February and March winter possibilities. Again, don't have a distinct recommendation to make to the board. It's the board's pleasure whether or not they think one day and one and a half days is enough buffer or if you want to go to two and a half days, your choice. But as we pass up early release days, we start running out of options and then we might have to say that S-word with the Saturday, you know, for makeup time and that doesn't go over well, you know.
Well, it's counterproductive anyway.
Right. And if you look at the end of the school year, we could push the last day of school only one day further because then that Sunday is June 11th and we can't go past that with the student calendar. So we're just kind of pinned in with what we have and so this is the first recommendation.
The only other option of those would be to take it out of Easter Vacation Break, Spring Break?
Spring Break is an option as well if the board wanted to consider that, yes.
What were those days?
That's another S-word to Spring Break.
What were those days slated for? Was it for teachers to work in their classroom or was it staff development?
Those days were, I think they were listed as early release T, which is, yes, either teacher PLC department, grade level meetings, or teacher planning and data review.
Well, I know how teachers need that time in their classroom.
I agree. That's why they were initially put throughout the calendar, you know, we spread them out. But the student days are mandated and the teacher planning days aren't mandated, so...
If we have to do anything, could we just look at the one you're recommending or telling us about for February and not make a decision at this point for the May one? So if we...
That was kind of my thought too, for a couple of reasons. First of all, the first reason is the May one is really, again, the testing is over, I mean, for the elementary anyway. Am I right? Maybe not.
No.
No? Okay.
But then if we don't have that weather, then you wouldn't have to take the May day.
And we're going to meet twice more before it happens.
Right. So maybe if we just looked at, I understand what you're saying, give us a little bit of a buffer, although I do hate to take teachers' work time in the classroom if we don't have to.
Will? I don't feel like a half days are all that productive to begin with, so I'm in favor of switching them both, quite honestly. But I can understand her position about the need for the teachers' planning. I say we do February and then if we need March, then we do March, I mean, on May, but I'm flexible to do them both right now.
I'd be open to that, to slate that if we need it and then reevaluate it as time goes on.
You mean make the February day a full day and then wait for a teacher meeting during May?
I agree.
I think I agree with that.
So we can, then we can go ahead and amend the full meeting schedule across the street and then just take action on it over there?
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, budget amendments for a personal finance officer.
Okay, I've submitted before you budget amendments. The first one is for the State Public School Fund. It's for an increase to the fund of $219,000. Various programs within the state receive additional funds. The next one is federal grant funds. It's a net of $944 increase. Four different programs receive funds from federal sources. The next one is a budget amendment for capital outlay funds. It's an increase of $196,000. The bulk of this is for state replacement school buses. We will receive two buses that the state actually pays for, but we have to book the financing of it. The last one is our other local fund. We received $93,000 additional dollars from numerous sources. And that's the last budget amendment for today. Are there any questions?
Do any board members have any question on these budget amendments?
I did.
Go ahead, Will.
Yes, sir. I understand it clearly that on the first page we're receiving nearly $220,000 in addition to what we received previously.
Since, this is since we did, passed the budget, did the budget resolution.
Yes, ma'am. And you got additional funds in that amount coming?
There are here.
Okay, and then the same as on the following page is $944.14?
Yes.
And then, and on this $300 yearly, $100,000, $196,000?
That's not actually cash that we're going to receive.
That's going to be paid for the buses that we're going to get reimbursed.
We don't, it's just a book. It's, we don't even, we never get the cash, we never make a check.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just that booking thing that they have to do.
They can provide us with some equipment for that bagging, bus.
Yes, it's for school buses.
So that money we did not receive, but we did, it looks to me like on the final page, a $93,000 and 900, almost $94,000? Okay, so this is, okay. So we're basically looking at giving them additional $320,000? I understand they got to go to these different portions of the budget, but is that what I'm understanding correctly? Okay. And we, this isn't appropriate where the money actually is going to be lying out of, it's just going to go back into these, right? I'm just currently understanding this money came in, have we already spent it or is it, are we deciding where it's going yet?
Yes, when the state money comes in, it comes in, it comes in by the program and we probably need to show you in allotment form. It all comes in, there's about 30 different programs in state that they give us money and you have to spend it in those programs and according to the rules. We have an allotment policy manual and everything.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's not, it's not free money. It's money that I anticipate receiving.
Yes, ma'am.
As Mr. Stefani's been telling you, we get money and they take money all year long. We're on our 35th revision right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, and these will be in the consent agenda. Okay, next item, book discussion. The pamphlet can be good for a girl. This is something that board members have asked to be put on the agenda. I'll just turn it over to you for discussion.
Okay. Well, I am talking about this book right here in Center High School Library. I am concerned about a lot of things in the book, but most importantly, I'm concerned that this book, which is depicted between three freshman girls and a high school senior, not all at the same time, but in various instances in the book. And a lot of what they're doing is, doesn't run parallel with our school policy, okay? Like underage drinking and very graphic sexual encounters and smoking and, quite honestly, old sex, sex. And so I believe that we, well, I know that we have the sole authority to adopt self numbering texts, whether or not the state's approved list or not. And so I'm not real happy that that book is in the high school library with no restrictions put in place if a child is in the custody or care and guidance of the school system. As a parent, you can't have any controls if your child views that book while in that library. So that's my concern.
Okay, Superintendent Stefani, would you like to mention the process that goes went through back in 2013?
Yes, I've got a summary document that was presented to the Board of Education in July of 2013 and it was presented by representatives of the District Media and Technology Advisory Committee. They reviewed the book. The committee consisted of parents of elementary and high school students, media specialists, a teacher assistant, a former middle school principal, a high school student, and the chief information officer, which is Mr. Paul O'Brien. After they reviewed the book, they summarized saying that the group overwhelmingly but not unanimously recommended the book remain in the library. It would be inappropriate to remove the book because we may disagree with morals, values, or decisions of the characters in that book. Again, that was July of 2013. And for specifics on the committee's actions, I'll open it up to Mr. O'Brien or if you want to ask questions of him because he was the chair of that committee at the time.
Mr. O'Brien, would you like to say anything about committee discussion or the process they went through?
Yes, sir. Our policy 3210 is the governing policy in this instance, the rental inspection of instructional materials. And so what happened at that time is someone from the public made the complaint about the book and there's a form that's attached to our policy that we asked the person to fill out explaining their objections and concerns and so forth. That form went to the School Media and Technology Advisory Committee, which consisted of teachers, media specialists, parents, and students. And they reviewed their complaint, they reviewed the book and other documentation they felt was inappropriate and recommended that the book be kept in the library. At that point, the person who made the complaint filed the appeal, which is also part of the policy, and asked for the school-based decision to be reviewed by the district committee. And so we convened the district committee and Mr. Stefani told the kind of folks that were on there, parents, students, and staff. And each one of them read the book completely, wrote the complaint, looked at reviews and such, and again made the recommendation that the book not be removed. That recommendation was presented to the Board of Education at that time and the board voted to keep the book in the library.
I was on the board at that time and as I remember, only three adults spoke for, you know, banning the book and only three adults spoke for keeping it. The way I look at it, we have approximately 1,250 students in the high schools, two high schools, who would have access to this, which roughly you'd have 2,500 parents. And we do have a safeguard that the parents can sign a form that allows them, what's the name of that form?
Yes, sir. When we finished this process back in 2013, realizing that, recognizing the concerns of some parents who might not want their children to have access to that book, we put a process in place that allows the parent or guardian to control and approve books before they're checked out by their student. The form is on our information for parents page. They fill out the form and then they can either give a list of pre-approved books that the kid can check out or a list of books that they don't want them to check out, or they can ask the media specialist to contact the parent when the kid wants to check out a book. So Johnny comes up and wants his book, okay, but I got to call home, call home and then check out the book. We've had only a few parents take advantage of that and none took advantage of it this year. But the purpose of that was to give the parent that wanted more control, more control.
So out of about 1,250 students and roughly 2,500 parents, if parents did not sign that form to be notified, in other words, if we did ban that book, we would be abridging someone's rights to read that book, you know, that's in our library. I just can't see it, you know, parents that signed to be notified that, you know, we should go back and, you know, vote to ban the book from, you know, from our libraries.
Well, excuse me one second if I would. Did you say the policy prevented the child if they took advantage of it, assuming the parent filled that out, from checking it out? Or did you say it was a restriction while they're in the care of the school in place to prevent a child from viewing the book while they're at school?
No, sir. I said checking it out.
Yes, sir. That's a problem. And I'll be honest with you. I spoke with seven of the sitting commissioners and only one of them wasn't sure about if they want their child or any other child having access to that book while they're in the school system. I spoke with a lot of people around this county and when the newspaper called me to talk about this book, I asked them and quizzed them on that book and asked them, you know, have they read it? And they said yes. I said, would you print any excerpts of this book in the newspaper? They said, of course, they'd have to talk with the editor. I said, if you choose or they choose not to, would you print at least that I asked you to and your reason as to why not? Now, I'm not trying to abridge anybody's rights. What I'm trying to do is say that this doesn't run parallel with the policies set in place at school. Now, if I'm not mistaken, just a couple of weekends back, we had a situation where some people did some underage drinking, okay? So if you act out the things in this book, you're not only breaking the school's policy violating that, you're violating the law. So, and as far as abridging people's rights, I have numerous Supreme Court rulings that I can reference right here that talk about First Amendment rights while in the school. They don't say that you lose your First Amendment rights when you walk into the school, but overwhelmingly, what the US Supreme Court has said is that you have less First Amendment rights when you go into the school. And they particularly are concerned about when your rights as free First Amendment take place of the educational process. They take precedent, they don't want that to happen. And they also talked about a situation in 2009 in Miami where they had two of those very boards review a book on Cuba. And those two very boards also said that that book should be left. And when those six out of seven board education members voted to remove the book, they were challenged in court and it went all the way up to the State Appeals Court, which found in favor of Board of Education. And then so they went to the Supreme Court. Well, the Supreme Court didn't hear it. They kicked it back down because they didn't abridge anybody's rights. All they were trying to do is provide a quality education. And so I'm a little perplexed as to how we don't have a concern as to what our students are reading and learning. Are we, are we basically, I mean, are we just saying that we agree with the actions that are taking place in this book?
I would like to address a couple of those issues that you raised. First, there are lots of books that depict things that wouldn't be in line with school rules. The purpose of having those books in the media center are because our students deal with issues like that. And so providing them a way to see how other people deal with issues gives them another perspective. In fact, this book that we're talking about right now, I would classify as a cautionary tale, not a glorification of the acts that you mentioned in there. So if we were to set a standard that we couldn't have a book that addressed anything that was contrary to school rules, we would have to get rid of our westerns that have guns. I mean, there are just tons of things. So that's not the standard that we use. And I agree completely that the Board of Education has sole authority to keep or remove this. No question about that. I think that's clear in policy and clear in law.
Okay. And so where are we going to draw a threshold? I mean, kids deal with a lot of things, like you said. Do we have High Times Magazine in that school or Penthouse Magazine? Is that available? Where do we draw the line? They deal with stuff like that too?
One line draws with High Times Magazine or Penthouse Magazine because those are to glorify those illegal activities. That's not what the committee said this book was about.
I would just like to say a little bit about the book in regards to our school system. I know that no professional in our school system chose that book trying to encourage some of the behaviors that are in that book. And I've read the book to, have any of our high school students read this book? No. Well, my daughter didn't want to read the book. She had heard about the book. I have a daughter at the high school, she didn't want to read the book. But I see what Mr. O'Brien's saying about it being a cautionary book. Our children are going to face, I don't even know what word to use, but they're going to face tough decisions and we want them to make good decisions that they will not regret down the road. Most of us as parents talk to our children about these things. I'm sure your parents have all talked to you. I've talked to my daughter. But I think about the children that maybe don't have that rapport with their parents. Maybe if that child were to read this book, maybe it would, they could make a connection. And I don't like the language in this book. I want to come out with that. I don't like it. But I know this author is an award-winning author. She had been on several of the award-winning list. That's probably why it was chosen to put in the library. I doubt that any librarian reads every book in the library. I, you know, how do you all feel about taking books off the shelf? What are your thoughts? As high schoolers?
I mean, I think if it's on the shelves, they have the right to read it. I mean, no one, everyone picks of what they will. It doesn't mean they're going to read it and instantly start going out and drinking and doing whatever actions were included in the book. So it's really, I haven't read it personally and I don't think I would even if I did see it because I, I mean, I'm not interested in any of that sort of thing. But those who might, might read it and they can see kind of the things that go wrong with that kind of lifestyle and they could say, wow, that's not something I want to do, you know, let's, you know, I want to lead a good productive life and that doesn't seem like the sort of things I want to get into in high school. So it's really just, it's up to the student how they interpret it and I think they do have the right to kind of pick and choose on their own what they do and do, don't read.
I think even if the book were discontinued, that doesn't stop the student from going out of their way to read the book. I mean, I'm sure it's even offered in our public library, so even whether it's offered in our school library or found someone else, I don't think it really matters if it's in our school library.
I would also say in lots of literature classes offered at high schools, there are literary works that would depict actions that would go against school policies. However, as I said before, they're cautionary tales so students can learn from these actions instead of going through the experience, having the regret of doing said action. I think that's a very important thing to have in our system and if that can stop at least one student from committing an action, depicting it in that book, I think it's fair enough sort of keeping it in our library.
I agree with it. You know, it is a book that's cautionary, you know, because I had to read it back when we had to determine what to do with it. And I wish, and I have two daughters, I wish they would have had access when they were freshmen to find out how a senior could manipulate them. I'm not saying that my role as a parent was bad and I didn't, you know, tell them about these things, but I wish they would have had, you know, access to a book like that so they could have learned, you know, how some guys are going to manipulate girls.
Well, your kids aren't always going to listen to you. They're going to listen to their peers. What Ryan did there, you know, they think we know nothing. Exactly. At times.
Well, could I just say that had any of those experiences resulted in them being reprimanded by the school or the law and it was like a consequence for the action, then I could see how somebody might have learned from that, okay? But I didn't see that in that book. In fact, I saw a lot of graphic detail and I think we could have, you know, a lot of lessons learned without such graphic. And I think if it would have been depicted between two adults even, it wouldn't even be in violation of school policy of some of the literary works you might be referencing. So what I'd like to say is that is anybody that's sitting on this board willing to read any excerpts from this book so that people that haven't read it understand what I'm talking about? You've read excerpts from that book in front of this camera?
It was done.
It was done? Are you willing to do it now?
My concern is, first of all, that it's a book that is not mandatory, is strictly a book that they can choose to read, they don't have to choose to read it. And my other concern is that if we get rid of this book, there's going to be another book and another book and another book. And so we're going to just create, I mean, it's, that's my...
Well, this ain't marketing, it could be made to drugs. If we get rid of this drug, then we got to get rid of another one and another one and another one. Where do we stop? I mean, so that's not even worth thinking about.
I think it's worth it, I said.
I'm asking you, are you willing to, are you willing to read that excerpt from this book?
With all due respect, there is a lesson to be learned from that.
Okay.
And the lesson, the lesson to be learned is that those young girls got their heart broken and they were taken advantage of. So I disagree with the fact that there wasn't a lesson to be learned. Now, maybe there wasn't a lesson to be learned about the drinking, but...
Fine.
But I do have concerns too about we've got professional people hired to choose books for our libraries. And as a former teacher, I was able to choose for my classroom what I wanted to share with them in regards to literature and I felt that I was qualified to do that. Where's Ms. Doughty? She's their principal. What are her thoughts?
I think that what we're comfortable and used to as when we grew up in what were libraries back then with librarians, which are no longer libraries or librarians, they're media centers and media coordinators. I think that we changed to adapt to the demographic that we serve. I mean, we're in a service industry and we're serving young people who tackle issues that many of us are unprepared to deal with. Even me as a young mother, I don't have kids that are their age, but I deal with them and the issues that they face every day. And I think that it's unfair to assume that they rely solely on their parents or us as the adults that deal with them every day to be the source of all their information. So I think that they do seek out, whether it's online, through their phones, through their peers, through literature, through books, whatever the case may be, they look for other people who feel like them, who've been through situations that they've been through. And so I think that... And so I think that in a situation like this, having access to that is a choice they make, whether they go into the library and seek this book out or not. It's a choice that they get to make. And I think that as parents, it's a parent's job to be there to support and understand if they read that book, answer tough questions. If they come to us to ask questions, for us to be there as a resource for them. But I believe that students have the ability to make sound choices. And it's our job to support them in helping them to make the best choices possible. And what fits one family may not fit another family. What fits one student may not fit another student. And so I don't know that we can pass judgment on students who choose to read the book or students who choose not to read the book, but it's a matter of choice.
I agree with that. I think that that's part of the problem, is that we're assuming that all parents want their students viewing that. And even if the parent tells a child, how many of the parents know that sometimes you have a child ever experienced telling your child not to do something? They do it anyways? Why can't we have a little bit of guidance and policy? I'm saying, so we don't even have any restrictions in place for the parents that don't want their kid viewing it while they're in the care of the school. Why is that so wrong if what we're saying is that one family might not want what another family does? Why are we relying on children, because they're not adults, all of them yet, to make the decisions? And they're required to come into the schools by law, so they can't make the decision not to go to school. But yet somehow or another, I'm supposed to be convinced in the thinking that they're supposed to make their decisions outside of the parental responsibilities? I'm confused. I mean, I agree with you on a lot of it, but I don't because we have no mechanism in place to do the will of the parent that doesn't want their child viewing this. Now, if they're going to the public library, they're going to a store, that's so be it. But that's not what's going on here. The justices in most of these cases talk about, you know... Yes, the students have freedoms and amendment rights, but the school is there to guide and educate. I mean, we have a responsibility here. I don't feel like just because society has dwindled down that we need to accept that as a precedent for this. And the only thing I'd like to further say is, is that if nobody up here will read an excerpt, and that ought to tell you something. And I'm willing to read an excerpt if they aren't, because that's how important I feel about it. Now, anybody up here want to read it?
The board's already taken action on this.
Okay.
They discussed it. You know, I go back to...
I wasn't on the board.
I go back to 2,500 parents approximately did not even sign that form to be notified if their kid wanted to be checked out a book, which means they probably didn't care if they read it during school. You know, if they really wanted to be notified, they would have filled the form out, but they didn't. And I also dare say that anything in that book, there's probably not been a handful of kids in the high school that have ever not heard of any of that. They're pretty savvy these days and know things that are going on. Plus, talk to the language in the book. I imagine most students in the high school have heard some rap music within the last, you know, month or so. And the language in that make your hairs, you know, curl.
But when they go to buy it, there's a parent advisory sticker on a lot of those albums, and that's what I'm talking about. This book's sitting there with the rest of them. There's no restriction, there's no advisory, there's no warning, there's no nothing. So yes, I agree with you. They have heard a lot of it. But I'm not using that as a reason to say that just because there's a whole bunch of stuff going on around this world that isn't right or can be questioned, means that we have to use that as a way to define this as being any more reasonable. That's all I'm saying. I mean, how about I just read an excerpt? The board doesn't want to do anything about it. Then the parents out there can know that I disapprove of it personally, as a citizen, as a parent. And I don't think it should be in there. And I think if it is in there, that if I had my children there or anyone else's children there, then I would be able to say, hey, look, I don't want my child viewing this book while they're in the custody of the school, in the care of the school.
You know, I would caution you on doing that because people that are gonna watch this video at home could have their underage children, you know, sitting there watching. The board works there.
So we're not worried about the underage children that are in the high school that view it, but we're worried about the underage children that are gonna watch it and view it? Is that what I'm understanding?
Like my granddaughter, I wouldn't want her watching this book, meaning to watch her meemaw and then to hear that.
Yes, ma'am.
She's five years old.
Okay.
So I don't think that's the time or place to do that.
Very good.
We've all read the book.
I think we all agree that there is some language that we don't care for. Although I do have to say, it's not like it's through the whole book. You know, most of the book is not offensive to me. There was some language that was offensive to me. But again, I look at the... I remember what it was like to be that age and relate to... You know, I... There's a lesson here to be learned from that book for young girls. There is.
So you don't think it would be good enough for me to give them a 10-second, little remove your children and read an excerpt? You think that's too over the top?
Personally, yes.
Okay. Have you read this book, Ms. Stefani?
Have not.
Okay.
Have not read the book.
All right. Well, I won't read any. They're not gonna read any. All sex, sex, underage drinking, and on and on it goes. They can't read it. They won't read it.
We read it, Will.
I'm talking about out in front of the peers, out in front of the citizens. And the parents, they haven't taken the time to read it. They don't even know about it.
But they have that opportunity now.
Yes, ma'am.
If they have any interest in finding out what's in that book.
Yes, ma'am.
They can, they can read it.
Okay.
So I think we should let them make that choice.
Yes, ma'am.
Plus, I'm sure it'll probably be one of the most popular read books right now.
Honestly, you need to read the whole book, Mr. Stefani. Don't just read the beats chapter, okay? Read the whole book. You know, there are bad things in that book. There are, as Will says, there are. But there is a good lesson to be learned from that book, if you can get past the language.
This book received the Maryland Great Books for Teens Award in 2006 and also the Kentucky Bluegrass Award Master List. We had somebody, one of the adults at the meeting in 2013 that listed some of the books that have been banned in the past in different places. And I went back and highlighted some of them that he had mentioned. One was The Adventures of Uncle Barry Finn, Call of the Wild by Jack London, Grapes of Wrath by John Steinbeck, Moby Dick, Red Magic Curry by Stephen Crane, Scarlet Letter, Streetcar Named Desire, The Killer Mockingbird, and Uncle Tom's Cap. And those have all been books that have been banned in different places.
Could I ask that we at least explore the idea of revising our policy in such that if our parents, they do not want their child viewing having access to this book, that it be made in such that it's identified? So that if our parents, they do know about this book now, that are concerned that their kids have the protection that they requested, because we don't have a mechanism in place?
Okay. Let me see if I understand you. Can they possibly agree with me here? You mean like have a special section of the library where this book is located?
I hadn't made that determination in my own mind, but something, yes. So that would be a thought. I'm not saying... I mean, you mentioned rap music. I don't look at a lot of it personally. But I have went through different music aisles and different movie aisles and they have had different labels on it. I mean, just because if you leave out a school, I know this is not the same example, but you can go with smoke at 16 or 17. We don't allow it at all on the campus. Now, that's how I feel about this book. But even if we can't do anything like that, can't we at least put some mechanism in place so that the parent that wants to have parental involvement, that they're not relying on the school to do the best for their child and the child has access to this where they wouldn't in their home? I don't think that's unreasonable.
What do we have in place? Just a form that parents have the option of filling out?
Well, and I think Mr. Kravik's point is that form limits their ability to check the book out.
I see.
It doesn't limit their ability to take it off the shelf and sit down in the library and read it.
Ah, okay.
I will say that we had some discussion about those kinds of practices, labeling books, for example, or putting some behind the shelf or whatever. And I'd have to go back and look at the specifics, but if memory serves, that's counter to the Library Bill of Rights from the American Libraries Association. That's not, that's not binding regulation, but it's a best practice kind of document. But we can certainly go back and look at that and do some research and let you know what we want there.
Would there be some kind of... Because I wouldn't think that it would be left up to us to determine each book that needed to be in there and be restricted. So because then it could really get to be cumbersome if we were doing that. How, do you know how that would work?
I suspect that's one of the reasons that it's not a recommended practice, because then who decides? And where the things that this may be offensive to some people, there may be another book that's got some violence that's offensive, or it may be another book that has religious practices that are offensive. So I don't know what that mechanism would look like.
Okay. I just didn't know if you...
Well, I mean, the music is because of, not the violence, it's because of the language usually. And so maybe we could start with something like that.
Yes, ma'am. I was just saying, maybe we could just start with the language as a factor. I don't know.
Well, could we use the same type of form, but have that filled out by the parent and have both options? Because no one has filled it out this year. So at least they would have that option. So you're not talking about very many kids, maybe a handful at the most at the beginning of the year, for any book that they're even reading in the school or in the library, that that child, the media specialist knows, if that child is even browsing the books, that they need to get their permission to, you know, be able to sit down and read that one or take it out of the media room.
They wouldn't take it out of the media room?
No, that's what I'm saying though, for them to even sit down and read it or look at it. So you're, you're not talking about, but maybe, well, I don't even know. We didn't have any, but say one or two students in the whole school system that would have to fill out that form, the parent, for them to even pick up any of the books?
I can see if we get one or two forms back, that that would be able to manage.
Okay, but if it was more than that, then the library...
Yeah, yeah. If it's a hundred, now that's a different story. But if it's a handful...
Well, even if it was 25, you've got a librarian that's not able to do her job because all she's doing is walking around a little bit.
How does the board go home now? Does a parent have to proactively know about it, request it, or are they made aware of it? Or how do you...
It's in the handbook. It's in the handbook that all parents are responsible for.
All right.
And honestly speaking, even if we don't have a policy, I know, you know, as a former teacher, if I got a note from a parent that said, I do not want my child to do da-da-da-da-da...
Then you don't do it.
Then I usually did their wishes. You know, unless it was something, I never got a note that said, I don't want my child eating lunch. But, you know, unless it was something that was going to harm... And I never had any requests that would harm the child. I, you know, I, I think that the faculty will work with the parents and their wishes. I, you know, the faculty members that I know certainly have always worked with me as a parent.
Yeah, I agree. You know, I think if you just handwrite a note to the teacher or the media specialist that you'd rather have, have a difficult call... You know, it's open communication. And we've never had a problem with that with the teachers and the parents. And so I don't think that would be a problem without making it a policy. But that's up to y'all.
Questions, comments?
I'd like to, I'd like to expand the policy a little at minimum. And if we could, that's what I would request.
Paul, would you mind checking that out?
So if the chairman understands it correctly, report back on some sort of labeling for books, either a label on the book or a separate location in the library for books that are deemed to be controversial? Does that report back on that? Is that what you're asking?
I wouldn't get into labeling that, the books.
And then somebody's got to read every book and you've got an opinion for that person.
You've got somebody's personal opinion.
I'm just trying to clarify what the board of libraries is looking to.
If a parent does not want the child browsing the books in the media room, they need to let the media specialist know. So incorporate that with the existing form that we have to see if that's...
Possibly, as our student board members mentioned, that there are different works that are cautionary, as this book is. Maybe if we could let our parents know in the policy that we do have literature that may be offensive to some. And if they have particular thoughts they would like for us to address with their student, then to please notify the school or an individual, whoever it may be.
Well, I, what I think of who you say is some kind of statement now, we're at the beginning of the year to say that the media center carries books for lots of different people, different age groups, and it may not all be appropriate for every student. And if you have concerns, contact your student's teacher.
You could even go as far as to say that somewhere that has explicit language and sexual content, because I believe that's what this has.
And even, you know, there is literature that might have, well, somebody, you mentioned westerns, but even worse than westerns to me, that would be offensive to some. They don't want the, you know, the terrible thing. They don't want their children reading about some of the atrocities of wars and what have you that have taken place. Not just graphic language, but graphic... I mean, I, I don't like that language either. I, you know...
Who's gonna go through all the books and determine?
Right.
Which has language you don't like?
I don't know. We can go through all the books, but I think certainly when something is brought to our attention, we have a responsibility of acknowledging what's in there.
And I think we do have, we do have a policy in place for that now. Is that correct, Mr. O'Brien? Where, like this book was brought to a board's attention in 2013, and so they went through the process.
Two, two different committees met.
Yeah. Policy 3210, parental inspection of, objection to instructional materials.
Like I said about the case that happened in 2009, two committees met, same thing. They said, don't take the book out. And then that local Board of Education removed the book. I'm saying, so it can go either way. I recognize that the majority of the board here doesn't agree with my interpretation of that. That's fine. All I'm saying is, can we expand our policy so that when somebody is alerted that we have explicit language and sexual content, doesn't mean we have to read every book. But when we find one that has that, can we either identify it or make it on a list that is included to the parents? I mean, I don't think, I would like to believe that the list isn't gonna be overwhelmingly, but it could be. Maybe I'm wrong.
Perhaps we could start a list of books that have raised concerns by parents.
I'll come up with a statement that I described earlier and get back to you to see if that's sufficient or if we need to do something else.
You're good at statements, Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, I'll just go back to the point that not a single parent can allow that form, which means obviously they don't care if the kid checks the book out or they read it at school. All right, we'll come back with a statement for us, Paul.
Yes.
Review. Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda, district accreditation. Superintendent Stefani?
Yes, there were some questions about accreditation, if the Kerratt County School District is involved in the accreditation activities. I talked with Mrs. Kinsel, and she's out of district today, so she couldn't be here. So she left me some information about the history of accreditation that she knows of in the Kerratt County Schools. Back in 2010, the school system began working with a company called Advanced Ed to achieve district accreditation for all the schools.
Now, that's the old Southern... Now, that's the old Southern Association's accreditation. There's a lot of people, here to go, and you would.
Said that through changes in leadership and some budget concerns for the cost of becoming accredited through Advanced Ed, the district was asked to seek other options, asked to seek other options for accrediting the schools. Advanced Ed, cost for accreditation was $6,500 per year, and typically, the accreditation was a five-year process. In 2013-14, the State Board of Education began developing an accreditation process for schools, primarily high schools. The Curritah County School District contacted DPI to let them know we were interested in piloting this new program. Initial data review for our two high schools was conducted by DPI in the fall of 2015-16. The determinations at that time was that JPNA would earn state accreditation by going through the comprehensive needs assessment, because they met the minimum number of standards on the accreditation check form. So, the data review process was $1,840 per school, and that would cover staff time to synthesize, analyze school data, and determine an accreditation designation.
So, JPNA is accredited?
Not yet.
Now, you haven't paid the money?
Well, I'll get to that.
Okay.
At the same time, DPI determined that Curritah County High School would not be eligible for state accreditation based on the data review at that time. So, it says after submission of a comprehensive needs assessment, a site visit would need to be required for that site. Best-case scenario without the site visit would be a provisional status and require additional review of data in the following year. Fees for schools that require a site visit along with the needs assessment would be $6,806 for the accreditation process. That fee covers the cost of staff time, to synthesize and analyze school data, conduct a two-day site visit, and write at the assessment report along with the school. At the time that this occurred, it was thought that the best process would be when both schools were eligible for the accreditation label, then we would submit the money and the final forms to DPI, and both would be accredited at the same time. When I talked to Mrs. Kinsel, the one piece that Curritah High School would have to meet, and then they would meet the minimum number of required standards on the, not standards, learning standards, but standards in the accreditation process-
Yes.
-would be just to meet the growth standard on the school's report card. And right now, the, the high school is in the not met status. So, if you meet or exceed growth status on the report card, that's one of the standards to check off. They have three other ones right now that have to do with graduation rate, dropout rate beating the state average, and-
And that's the one that wouldn't need-
Oh, oh, being an A, B, or C school on the state report card. They have those three standards right now, and you have to meet four to get accreditation.
The one without the site visits?
Yes.
Okay. Which would be the cheaper cost.
And JPNA meets all of those.
Yes.
And how come we don't want them, like, they're accredited?
I wasn't in that discussion, so I can't answer that. I think we just do all of the high schools at the same time was the thought process.
Early on, you're talking about the Advanced Ed program that obviously was during 2010, I think you said?
Yes.
$6,500 either for five years was the projected cost?
I said typically, it was a five-year process, yeah.
Was that for doing all 10 schools, or was that just for doing two schools at the time? What was that?
Um, I'd have to double-check that, because I did see another school district recently had either a middle school or an elementary school accredited through Advanced Ed. So, I don't know if we were going through the whole process. I'd have to ask Mrs. Kinsel.
I remember talking about it.
I remember talking about it, and I think it would be every school. You and I were both still teenagers at that point in time.
So, I'm looking at the 8,000. Was it, was it 8,600 day charge for the site visit for the DPI?
So, if you do a data review and a site visit, it was 68.
68.
68.06.
Okay, and so, but you had to pay the 1,800 and something per school also?
The 1,800 was the data review, so it would be about, you know, $5,000, about $5,000 extra for the site visit part.
Who conducts this?
Like, JPNA would only have to pay the 1,118, because they met all the criteria. But the high school would have, we'd have to do more if we wanted to go on and do it now because of site visits.
Right. If you don't need the standards, then what you do is you have to put in an improvement plan, and then their site visit comes out and sees how you're doing, the improvement plan, and what processes you have in place to improve the school.
At the time we were doing Advanced Ed, I'm almost certain we were trying to accredit, do accreditation for all the schools, which was then $6,500.
It was district?
Am I right?
It was district.
Seventy thousand, somewhere in the 70,000 dollar range.
Ten schools. Who oversees this process?
This new one is, comes out of the State Department of Education.
I see.
I would, I would think that we'd want all, as many schools as we can get accredited. Anyone else feel that?
Well, I can just bring up the point, what is the benefit of accreditation? You know, over the years, you know, it's not penalized to our students at all. That students accepted to Harvard, get full scholarships to Duke, full scholarships to Wake Forest, and almost every other major university in North Carolina, plus one to University of Virginia, who was a student board member. And colleges don't even look at whether you're accredited or not. They look to see how you would do on your standardized test, SAT or SAT. They look at your grades, they look at the rigor in the subjects that you take, they look at writing sample, and there may be a couple others, and a lot of times I've looked at that. But, you know, our stu-
It's the whole person.
Yeah.
Yeah, then you're involved there.
Well, you stop thinking here, how many kids now are homeschooled or charter school and that, and they're not accredited, and they have the same advantages as, you know, the kids in the public school. Colleges do not look.
Yeah, one of the things that colleges look at, and I think that you guys, especially you seniors then, is what kinds of things are you doing outside of school? What kind of volunteer thing are you doing? What kind of things are you doing? Community involved things are you doing? And what kinds of things are you doing that make you a better person?
Stand out.
Okay, am I wrong in any of that? Mr. Bass, Mike, Miss Bowden?
They, they do tend to ask us occasionally about whether we're accredited or not. But, but I'll, I'll follow it up by saying, we've never had a credit turned down. So, the question does come up. I wouldn't even say it comes up regularly, but occasionally, when we're talking to a college, they'll, they'll ask the question, but it hasn't seemed to affect anything at this point, to my knowledge.
So, what would be the plus of being accredited? What would be the plus?
Well, by definition, it says here, from the State Board of Education, it's an activity where the schools go through a quality assurance process that validates, validates what you're doing, that it's, that it's a best practice, and it's, it's of the highest quality for students.
Yeah. Yeah, we were talking about Thomas Poston. He had a full, he was accepted at Harvard, but he got a full scholarship to-
Wake Forest.
-Wake Forest, so he went there.
Any idea how many, you know, what are the statistics in North Carolina? Is the majority of their schools, have they gone through this process? Are we in the minority, or are we in the majority, or?
I can check. I'll get back with you. I don't know.
I know that we've produced a number of lawyers. Dennis, we had one road in Curritah that two students, 500 feet apart, became medical doctors.
I know.
There was Dr. Maxwell and Dr. Wheeler. And other colleges ask, "Are you accredited?"
One who is, we are sure he's going to be the president, the president someday, but, yeah, but he is now an aide for the senator in Alaska. I spoke with him at Christmas.
I taught a young lady who, sure, she's elected first. Woman president of these days.
She's sitting right over there.
She, she had a close scare here recently.
But I'll go with whatever the rest of the board wants to. I don't see any purpose in it.
Do you know what Dare County is? Is there a Dare?
Dareous.
All schools.
I'm sorry?
All, all schools. They're Dare.
Okay.
Did they go Advanced Ed, or did they go?
They went to Advanced Ed. The year I came, we were completing the process. I started it, and then I came here, and they completed it first year I was here.
We tend to get that question more from Virginia schools about whether we're accredited high schools. That's where I've never still been asked.
Virginia, it's a big deal.
I think so, yes. I say that, but I'm assuming that's why we get the question.
But you say they've never turned any of their students down because they weren't accredited?
Well, I don't know if they've turned students down while they turned them down, but-
Well, how could it be a big deal for Virginia and not a big deal for students in North Carolina? I'm confused.
I'm saying, maybe it is more of an important issue there with those colleges. I don't know. I don't know what it is.
Well, I'm not, I'm not going to assume that just because everybody lives and goes to school in Virginia, that they go and college in Virginia. Not the one we like to think that the majority possibly. I would think that we would want to inspire the all we can be, and if that would be a way of helping somebody get into the school they would like to do so, and also distinguish such as being assured that we're doing what is-
Just proving to everybody that we're wonderful.
I don't know. We could talk about it, we could be about it. I prefer to think about it.
Constantly.
One, Karen. I'll do whatever the board's player is. I've already stated, I don't believe it.
I'd probably be interested in just the two high schools. If we do anything else, I'm all 10 of them. Need it, if you're talking about 70,000 dollars a year, I would, I would say it's mostly for our high school seniors to benefit from college enrollment. I mean, do you not, do you agree or not? Give me the pros and cons.
I would agree. I thought they said that the JPNA could be done for 1,840.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Because they have those 1,118. And I'm good with that right now, if we want to go on with that.
Yeah.
Go on and do that.
And we should do them both.
Maybe if we do NAP and see what the process is like, maybe that would help our high school to, you know, the CCHS. Maybe do one and then do two. I don't know. I'm for it.
I will, I'll be making another comment at the, the regular board meeting, where I have some positive feelings about the, the growth status at CCHS on the next report card.
Awesome.
So, if they would get that, then they would have the four out of the five criteria points.
Okay, and that's, I think that's what I was talking about, is if we can do NAP right now for, was it 1,118, I believe?
1,800.
1,800, okay. Then, let's look at what we can do, you know, you're going to give us some good information, that's great, and we might be able to do it.
Good unofficial information is what I'm giving.
Okay.
Anything further? Okay, next item on the agenda, placement of the upfront session. We had a request to move the upfront session earlier in the school board meeting. I'd just like to get the, you know, board members' feelings on that.
Where is the upfront session now?
Well, the public comment session.
At the end. But our meetings don't ever last over an hour and 15 minutes, and so, you're talking about 7:30, you're not talking about 10 o'clock. And not only that, my opinion is, if someone's interested enough that they want to come and talk to us, then surely they have some interest in the good things that they are going to hear about our, I mean, we have the kids doing presentations, you know, I would like to see them stay for those things, too.
It used to be at the beginning?
Yeah, I think so. Was it? But we met, we didn't start till 7 o'clock.
Maybe because of the bar, to accommodate people to be there for Mark.
I think they might want to talk about, anything they want to talk about, and it might have something to do with something we're getting ready to talk about. And I think it would be important to let the people who we have to say, and I heard from some of you, that there was concern about the children getting home in a timely fashion. And I would say that if we're concerned about that, that we make sure that those activities are taken care of first, and then put the citizens as the second priority. That's what I would ask.
So, you're saying leave it the way it is?
No, no.
You're saying do the spotlights and the student recognition and things, and then put the-
Which ends up being about 15 minutes difference, 15.
And so, basically, we get the children's activities at any event, we have the youngsters in there, and they need to get on, we're not having them wait on the public comment period to do their activities. And I think that's reasonable.
We also, right after the student spotlight event, after the beginning of the meeting, we have, you know, teachers highlighted that are receiving awards and stuff. I think that would be beneficial for community members to, you know, hear.
Yeah, I think, I think the last thing that I heard was that this becomes the first item in the business-type section of the, of the meeting, after all the recognitions. And so, then, before we would deal with, like today in the business section, we're going to deal with, you know, policy second readings and things of that sort, if the community went before those things, and now they're after.
I think that would be a good idea, to allow people to express whatever they, you know, if they have feelings about something that we're going to vote on, it would be nice for them to be able to share their thoughts prior to us voting. But I think, you know, having it after the students that are involved in the program, and after the teacher recognition, and I think that would, if we're going to move it, that would be a good place, maybe to the middle.
At the start of the new business, like you said.
All right, I like that.
I'll send the Kennedy Agenda outline to the board members, and we're all on the same page there.
Okay.
Okay, next item, second reading and adoption of 2016's all policy updates. Superintendent Spieck?
Yes, you can see the lengthy list of policy updates. It's the same list that you received at the last meeting. Last meeting was the first reading, and this is the second reading by, by board policy. This is at the work session, just if anybody has any questions about anything they reviewed in the last month, or if they heard any, you know, community input on any of the policies that we put up for first read last month. You can ask the questions now, if not, then I would submit them as-is for approval at the, the regular meeting.
Any questions on any of your policies?
Just a reminder, we get counsel, if you will, from the North Carolina School Boards Association on how to best align with state policies and mandates. And so, virtually, you know, per policy, we take those recommendations, and then we pass them on to you.
Okay, next item, school board member report. Jenna, Jacob, and Tyler, but before you begin, I'd just like to thank you for, you know, your opinions in that first section, and be, you know, what your thoughts and just how you feel about it.
And Jacob, since it kind of aligns with something we were talking about, any interest in sharing your news?
Um, oh, well, I think, what, Friday, I found out that I was accepted to UNC Chapel Hill.
Oh! What an honor.
Yes, that was my first choice, so I'm really excited.
And that's still while we were unaccredited, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, you were asked to, you know, kind of combine your reports from the two different schools, and then, you know, give a summary report, so I'll just, I'll start over you.
All right, well, I'll start off. I just have a short little summary of what JPNA has been doing to work on some of their problems. So, one of the, the biggest-
Sorry. That sounded terrible.
Stop. That's not what we talk about.
I'm sorry.
Tell them like I'm sorry.
Sarah.
Turn around, stop listening.
Ignore the guy.
They have been looking into fixing a lot of, or addressing many of the concerns.
Very good.
And Ms. Fallon has done an excellent job. One of the major concerns for students was that the, the online Spanish classes, they weren't working with them, they were having a lot of trouble, and Ms. Fallon was able to sit down with COA and implement a program where JPNA students can now take Spanish 111 and 112 face-to-face at COA-
Wow, yeah.
-and get their high school credits. So, that's a major reason.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All use.
They have been working on a program where seminar teachers are being taught how to talk the basics of the four- to five-year plan, so that students who have concerns with their plans are- with their plans or would like to make some changes will really see how it is guiding them up to their associate's degree. Instead of bombarding the counselor who's dealing with all 280 students, they can talk to the seminar teachers first, who can give them a detailed report of how, what their plan means, and how it's going to get them where they're going. I do know that Ms. Fallon said that she was talking to the nutrition department or the food service director to see if we can get a vending machine at that. And I believe she said it would serve the cafeteria-proof snacks, so we're not going to have a bunch of candy bars or anything, so. Might be some disappointment, but I think it's a, it's a good step. And... And lastly, one of the major concerns for students was the transportation. And one of the, the big issue was that the buses were getting to NAP late, so that they didn't have time to go to morning office hours and work on their projects and homework, or get the help that they needed. So Ms. Fallon has said that they're working with the transportation department to figure out a solution, so that our students can get there on time and early, so that they can get the help that they need. And then, of course, we did have a few other topics that were brought up, just like I mentioned, having more hands-on classes that could teach some real-world skills. And I do know I've been talking to some teachers and admin, and they've been saying they've been thinking about it, seeing if, how they could implement that, so that the students can get some of the skills that they're looking for before they move out to the real world.
So in summary, you were very appreciative of Ms. Fallon.
Yes. Ms. Fallon has gone above and beyond.
Me, too.
Are you, do you share buses? I believe you do, don't you?
We do.
So there's something...
And there was a change in the bus schedule. I believe it was my last fall, or the fall before that, with drop-off times, and it's just, it's a...
I know that we have that.
...well-oil machine getting everybody where they're supposed to be on time. So we're always constantly working to make that better.
We had a situation at one point where the kids were getting here before the teachers were, just so the buses could complete the runs.
Yeah. That didn't quite work out.
So your schedule, your students start the day with, like, office time every day?
Yes.
I see.
7:50 to 8:15.
Uh-huh.
Some of the buses don't get here until around 8:00. So it cuts into some of their time.
And I think it's wonderful that they're fighting to get that time.
I think it's awesome.
I do, too.
Yeah, and I know especially for clubs, a lot of clubs meet in the morning, and especially for the sophomores and juniors who go to the Aviation Center and to Elizabeth City, the buses leave at, what is it, 8:05 or 8:10? So they leave at 8:10, so they don't get any time with their club roster. So it is a big concern for them.
Good. Jake, Tyler, thank you very much. Jenna?
Okay, so Cindy and I just put it on slides for you, so you can see it. And Ms. Fallon and I also talked today about improvements. So first off, we have organized lunch activities just to get students more involved. So our student government and other clubs are planning activities during lunchtime, such as tie-dye Tuesday, even in tournaments, dodgeball, arm wrestling tournaments. And this just gets the students more involved, and just less people, more opportunities for them to be involved in things, and rather than making bad decisions during that time.
Tie-dye, you know, like tie-dye t-shirts?
Yeah.
We used to wear.
Second of all, power time management. We talked about our schedule a little bit in our last presentation. So just, we want to create flexibility while still giving the students the tutoring and the structured time they need, so they can use that time how they need it. So our student government officers, which we have representatives from each grade, and those students are elected by the students to represent them, they will meet with our administrative staff throughout the year to brainstorm ideas on how to improve on the One of our biggest things, which I think you had at the last meeting, was a new student welcome committee, and this is off to a great start. Basically, just how it goes, is the schedule of the student is shared with the committee. Student is shown around campus by one of our chairman, then they are offered a place to stay at lunch and make new friends. So I think this is just a big thing to get students more involved with new student committee.
Good, that's a good idea.
And then lastly, more things to come. We hope to have some clubs host and sponsor some of the following events, skill seminars, which we talked about last meeting also, just about college applications and taxes and things of that matter, and also anti-bullying assemblies and meetings, which were similar to Rachel's challenge, which we hosted last year. And that's it.
First of all, I want to make some notes.
Cindy, thank you very much for your report. Were there any board members I did?
I do have one thing. I attended the Currituck Ministers Council for Education this morning, and some of you may have gotten an email that they were planning an open house for March 2nd for administration and staff. They realigned that because it falls into our board meeting, and they're going to make it a more personal event, so the church sponsors will be contacting the school administration and trying to schedule a time where they're going to come in to your school lounges and be available to meet with your staff, and, and let them come in and say what they need, and just kind of meet them and that kind of thing. So look for, they'll be calling you.
Do you want to add anything else? Mark, you want to tell them the message that you found out this morning from the Sheriff's Department, and the notification of our employees about the scam that's out there?
Yes. There are, Paul, if I use the wrong words, help me out here. We've got, we've got some phishing emails circulating, and we've heard from now at least two, if not three, different counties in northeast North Carolina, where people are putting out, I call them bogus emails, but they use a familiar person's email address to get you to open it up, and then it, at the very least, infects your computer with a virus. At most, it can be identity theft, it could access district and personal accounts, and those types of things. And so we caution everybody to be as careful as you possibly can. We had one of those, was that this fall, Ms. Mackin, or was it last, last spring? You were out at a workshop, and, and an email came from you, but you didn't send an email.
Yeah, I didn't send it.
And so, you know, we, we had a little close call with that, and we, we targeted that and shut it down as quickly as we could, you know, from this side. So Paul's done a nice job notifying the staff. Lori received another email from another district today through the finance officers, because people were trying to get into the finance offices, which is where all the district funds are. And so they wanted to try to get access to those accounts, and so the finance officers quickly notified each other about what emails to avoid.
I think in Dare County, the email supposedly came from the superintendent asking the employees about their W-2 information. Said there was, you know, wrong or something, they wanted them to send their W-2 information back. So...
I think that's... So you're not going to ask for that?
No, superintendent, don't ever ask for that. Don't ever ask for that.
I think it's not just school systems, because we had something in the real estate office where a Realtor got something from someone she knew, it was a recognized name, saying, "I've got a really good lead for you." And it was...
Off of some training that we just received, and I'll get to Mr. O'Brien in a second, it just says, "If something looks peculiar in your email, it probably is." And if you see something that doesn't look right, do not open any attachments or links in that email, because that click is usually the one that, you know, gives access to your computer account and other things. Mr. O'Brien?
And we're in the midst of a training campaign right now. It started a couple of weeks ago, and then a couple of weeks where we've given our staff access to an online training course specifically directed at phishing attacks. And a lot of it, we've already finished it, some are still working, but specifically to address this issue, because it's been out there for a while.
Okay. Is there going to be an all-call go-out, or is there already going out to our employees about it?
And all email.
Oh, email.
That's not a security email, so it comes from us, it's a different... The rumors are out there that Ms. Mackin got 100% on the test in the, in the training, so...
Anything else? If there's nothing else, I consider the work session closed.
I'd like to call the February 2017 meeting of the Board of Education to order. First, we'll have an invocation. Ms. Hathrie?
Good evening. "Life is" by Mother Teresa. Life is an opportunity, benefit from it. Life is beauty, admire it. Life is a dream, realize it. Life is a challenge, meet it. Life is a duty, complete it. Life is a game, play it. Life is a promise, fulfill it. Life is sorrow, overcome it. Life is a song, sing it. Life is a struggle, accept it. Life is a tragedy, confront it. Life is an adventure, dare it. Life is luck, make it. Life is too precious, do not destroy it. And life is life, fight for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Matt Lutz from Currituck County Middle School will introduce the student who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Dr. Dobney. I'd like to introduce Ellie Jackson, a sixth grader.
Currituck County Middle School.
Great. Would you all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Ellie. This month, our school spotlight is on Currituck County Middle School. Now, once again, turn it over to Dr. Lutz.
Thank Dr. Dobney and the board. Really excited to bring a group of students here, along with two staff members, to talk a little bit about our Raider Roundtable. And Ms. Kuzinski, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Dobney and Mr. Stefanik and the board for inviting us here tonight to talk about our club. This is, we have a new club at Currituck County Middle School this year. It's called the Raider Roundtable Club. Myself, along with Ms. Kim Jackson, eighth-grade social studies teacher, are the sponsors. And the purpose of our group, or the purpose of our club is to, is to promote and increase kindness, positive behavior, school spirit, and school and community service. When Ms. Jackson and I were talking about the club and what we kind of wanted, we decided that we wanted a dedicated and eclectic group of students. We were looking in particular for a group of students who would have good, interesting, and varying ideas. We also wanted students who displayed positive leadership ability. In order to find these dedicated students for our club, we had students apply rather than simply sign up for the club. So now I'm going to turn it over to sixth graders CJ East and Ellie Jackson. They're going to tell you a little bit about the application process, and why they wanted to be members of the Raider Roundtable Club. And then when they finish, eighth grader Colleen Dongera will tell you about some of the things that our club has done so far, and some of the things that we are planning for the future. So right now, I'm going to turn it over to CJ and Ellie, and I think they have an application
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is CJ East. I am in the sixth grade at Currituck County Middle School. I wanted to join the Raider Roundtable, because I wanted to help my school get better, get a better, my school get better, from my perspective. So I asked Ms. Kuzinski for an application. The application process was lengthy, but it needed to be long and thorough, because Ms., because Ms. Kuzinski needed the right students for the Raider Roundtable. Some of the questions on the application were, have you had any leadership outside of the school? This is a great question, because if you have a good idea on the Raider Roundtable, you need to be able to express your idea. Another very good question is, if you have a disagreement with another student, how would you, how would you handle it? This is a good question, because we have disagreements with each other from time to time. When you have a disagreement, you need to be able to express your way you think it, and you need to have, you need to have many things to back up why you think it. All in all, the Raider Roundtable application was worth the effort we put into it.
My name is Ellie Jackson, and I am a sixth grader at Currituck County Middle School. I joined the Raider Roundtable Club because I wanted to make the school a better place. I already know a lot about the middle school, because my mom works there, so I was really excited about finally getting to come to CCMS. I joined the club because I wanted to be involved in school activities. I like that our club is trying to improve the school by coming up with ideas that kids will enjoy and make them want to become more involved.
Hello, everybody. My name is Colleen Dongera. I am in eighth grade, and I go to Currituck County Middle School. I am also one of the members of our Raider Roundtable Club, and in that club, we strive to do good in our community, and show leadership in our character, our school, and the projects that we perform. So what we have done thus far this year is plan our ugly sweater Christmas dance, which was a lot of fun. We made posters, we handed out prizes, everybody left and had smiles on their faces. We also collected non-perishable food items for our local food bank, and we have also been collecting aluminum tabs for Shriners Children's Hospital. In the future, we have a lot planned. We are going to do a March Kindness Week, where we are going to promote positivity, school spirit, and selflessness. That should be a lot of fun. We want to get all the kids in the school to participate. We are also going to have an appreciation day for our bus drivers and our nutrition workers. So, yeah, that should be a lot of fun. And we are constantly coming up with more ideas, and all these kids are putting in their input, and we should have more to tell you about.
Thank you.
Awesome pictures of those ugly sweaters. That was pretty impressive.
CJ, Ellie, and Colleen, thank you very much for your presentation. Colleen, maybe next year, when you go to the ninth grade, you can start this program at the high school, and the obvious name would be Knights of the Roundtable. Had to say it. Thank you for the spotlight, Dr. Lutz, and also congratulations on a nice basketball season so far. And also, congratulations on a nice basketball season so far. Okay, the February 2nd work session that we had at four o'clock today, we did something different. We're starting to tape those work sessions. And that way, I don't have to go over, you know, all the items here at the regular board meeting and just look at our website. And we'll tell you where or when it will be on the video channel or cable channel and when you can find it on YouTube. Okay, next item, approval of the agenda. And I'd like to add item four under globally competitive students, and that's school calendar change. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, globally competitive students. Future Business Leaders of America Student Recognition, Julie West, FBLA advisor.
Recently, our Moyac Middle School FBLA went to our regional competitive events, and we were in Greenville, North Carolina. We did exceptionally well. I was incredibly proud of the students and their accomplishments, as I always am. But this time, I had to print the winners because there were so many of them. So, in first place, we had a... And it's amazing that they know this, but Social Media first place went to a girl named Sarah Valentine. First place in Business Concepts went to McKenna Cartwright. Second place in Business Concepts went to Alexis Lamb. And currently, we're not teaching a true business course, so that's amazing to me. First place in FBLA Creed, and she could not be here tonight, is Taylor McCarthy. And she's also running for a high school position next year as vice president for the whole eastern region in the state. We have a first place to Introduction to Business Communications with Tara Blasier. A second place in Introduction to Business Communications with Sarah Valentine. Again, we had a third place in Business Math with Alexis Lamb. A third place in Career Decisions with Chevy Worrell, which we're also not teaching that course at the moment. So those just amaze me when they do such a good job of studying and something that we're not teaching. We had, this is kind of nice to roll off of your tongue, but we had a first place, a second place, and a third place in public speaking. And I don't think they got that from me tonight, because I don't think I'm doing as well. But we had a first place with Esperanza Palamata. A second place with Madison Hamilton. And a third place with Neveer Watts. And that's an eighth, a seventh, and a sixth grader right down the row. And a third place in a T-shirt design. And when the T-shirt design goes up against competition, they compete against high schoolers. So she placed third place, and her name was Lilianne Nacurvis. And again, this student competed against high schoolers. And we had a first place with Cheer and Chant with Kayla McCurley and Victoria Hammond. But then, they didn't stop winning there. They're, again, competitive in that stock market game. They love the stock market game. So we had a second-place team and a third-place team in the middle school competition, which goes across the whole nation. And that was, in third place, Tracy Collier, which she's not new to winning, and Noah Baloo. And we had a second-place team with Caterina Kapper and Caitlin Freddie. We are getting ready to plan to go to state competition. I am bringing the largest group I have ever taken to a state competition with 35 students across JPNAP and Moyac Middle School. So we're excited to see what kind of things are going to happen at state competition. Most of these students qualified to go on to states through this regional competition. So I'm very proud of them.
Congratulations. Would you all, one at a time, give your full name, please?
I'm Tracy Collier. Chevy Worrell. Tara Blasier.
Once again, congratulations. Do a great job.
Thank you.
Dr. Dobney, I ask for that to be put on the agenda because when I received the email with all of the award winners, I was just so amazed that I felt like the board and the community needed to see that achievement level from our students.
If I'm not mistaken, didn't one year, the stock market team win first place to middle school? Even against the competition with the high schools across the nation?
Well, they actually, I'm sorry we walked away, but they actually placed, it was seventh in the nation versus high school and community colleges.
Oh, wow.
So they placed seventh and ninth respectively in that group overall. So that's not shabby.
Really? I remember when they presented that, I asked them if they advised us on how to invest our money.
They do way better than I think I would.
Really?
Thank you.
It just goes to show you, you know, the good teachers that we have here and most especially how well the students learn.
It's impressive.
Okay, next, student board member reports. Sidney Christian is sick and couldn't make it tonight, so we'll hear them from Jenna, Jacob, and Tyler. Jenna?
Welcome, everyone, from Central Elementary. Welcome to February, everyone. CES hopes the love bug doesn't bite too hard. Several things are happening at Central this month. Our Second Nine Weeks PBIS Rewards Party, a special dance luau, was held today, and the kids that were honored had a great time getting their groove on. On February 7th, the school is celebrating Black History Month with a special assembly. On February 10th, the HSA will be sponsoring their Science Day, and students will get to take part in fun experiments that tie into their curriculums. February 14th will be our Second Nine Weeks Awards Assemblies in the morning. Grade 2-2 is at 9:00 a.m., and 3rd-5th grade is at 9:45 a.m. And on that same day, we will be hosting a community love bug luncheon. During the evening of February 23rd at 6:30, our 3rd-5th grade students will perform their musical at the school. And it's hard to believe, but our Third Nine Weeks interim reports will be sent home on February 24th. That's a lot for a month that only has 28 days. From Currituck County High School, CCHS is off and running into the spring 2017 semester. This marks the beginning of exciting times, especially for our seniors. The first round of cap and gown orders were taken this week. Seniors should be sure to stop in the office if they need more details or extra order forms. And cap and gown pictures are scheduled for February 22nd. Winter sports are wrapping up. Friday night is senior night at our home basketball game, so come out to support all our athletes. And good luck to all of our athletes who are participating in regional and state competitions. February 9th is our Spring Athletic Parent Meeting Night at 6:00 p.m. Valentine's Week is next week. Our Guidance Department has some great activities planned to spread the kindness. A dual-enrollment COA meeting is scheduled for February 27th at 6:00 p.m. for all students taking COA classes or interested in learning more about this opportunity. From Currituck County Middle School, we recently completed our annual Geography B, and our winner was Corey Shear. Thank you, Ms. Jackson, for leading this endeavor. We are hoping that he qualifies for the national tournament as he is one sharp kid. Our winter sports teams are finishing up their seasons. The last home wrestling match is February 8th, and our boys' basketball team hosts their opening tournament game on Valentine's Day at CCMS. Bradley King will represent CCMS at the state music competition as a result of her outstanding performance recently at the Eastern District Middle School Concert Band. Thank you, Mr. K, for providing this opportunity for our students. And with that, I turn it over to Jacob.
Good evening, everyone. Today, tonight, I'll be covering JPNAP, Shawboro, Jarvisburg, and Knott's Island Elementaries. JPNAP Early College. For February 2017, the Early College staff visited with each of the middle school's students and parents over the last two weeks in preparation for students to begin applying to attend JPNAP. The application window for next year's incoming freshman class opened February 1st. The application will be available on our website from February 1st through March 3rd. An open house for prospective students will be held on Thursday, February 9th at 4:00 p.m. The staff is currently preparing for student registration at COA for the 2017-2018 Spring and Fall Semesters. The Beta Club will sponsor a blood drive on Valentine's Day, Tuesday, February 14th. The deadline for seniors to pay senior dues is Monday, February 20th. We will be holding an ACT Blitz Week between February 20th and February 24th in preparation of our students taking the ACT on March 2nd. And a Soup Herb Gallery will be held at JPNAP on Friday, February 24th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. Tickets are $6 ahead of time and $8 at the door, and it includes a soup, salad, bread, drinks, and desserts. We'll also be featuring student artwork, and a few of the pieces will be open for silent auction. For Shawboro Elementary, Happy Groundhog Day. Phil saw his shadow, so prepare for another round of cold. Shawboro had a great time reading Ralph S. Mouse for their One District, One Book Initiative. They had a bunch of activities from a real motorcycle roaming the hallway. Their families, their families taking pictures with Flat Ralph and... And Ralph, along with his cousin, actually visiting the school. The fun isn't over yet. They had a lot planned for February already. Tomorrow, the fifth graders will compete in the annual Derby Race at JPNAP Early College. Come out and support the Mustangs. Starting Monday, they're hosting a glove drive to support the community through the cold winter, and students will participate in Jump Rope for Heart through their PE class. It is hard to believe that the Second Nine Weeks has ended. Report cards will be distributed on Monday, and they'll hold the Second Nine Weeks Award Ceremony on Thursday, February 9th. Finally, Shawboro will wrap up February with Dr. Seuss Week. Each day will be a fun spirit day with neat activities planned to honor the amazing author. Jarvisburg is excited for February. Their awards ceremony will be held Friday, February 10th at 10:00 o'clock for kindergarten through second grade, 10:30 for 3rd-5th grade. The Jarvisburg Elementary Club Day will also be held on February 10th. On Friday, February 17th, the 5th grade Wax Museum will be hosted from 9:00 to 11:30 a.m. And for Knott's Island Elementary, lots happening on the island in February. February 3rd is May the Force Be With You, Library Stem Night from 6:00 to 7:30. The Second Nine Weeks Award Assembly will be on February 10th. The students will be participating in a Love Your Pet Week. They will be collecting pet care donations for the Currituck Animal Assistance League and learning how to care for their pets. Knott's Island Elementary is teaming up with the Ruritans and Mackey Island for the Annual Island Cleanup Poster Contest, with the Annual Island Cleanup Event scheduled for April 11th. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'll be covering Griggs Elementary, Moyac Elementary, and Moyac Middle. From Griggs Elementary, students had a great time reading Ralph S. Mouse. Thank you to everyone who came out to read a chapter to our students. This Friday, our 5th grade students will be participating in the Pine Derby Race. Tuesday, February 7th, will be Class Pictures. Griggs Awards Pro-Dam will be Thursday, February 16th. K2 will begin at 8:15, and 3 through 5 will begin at 9:00. Our kindergarten students will begin swim lessons next week at the Y Swim Lessons... Did I read that right? At the Y Swim Lessons, which run from February 9th and February 13th through February 16th. This is a great opportunity for our students. Our PTO will be hosting a Family Bingo Night on February 17th. Griggs will hold their Second Annual Talent Show on Friday, March 3rd. Students will begin preparing for this soon. From Moyac Elementary, February will be a fun month for MES students. We have our upcoming Derby Race, Derby Race, sorry. This Friday, good luck 5th grade Panthers. Our awards programs for second quarter are next Wednesday. We have the Family Afternoon Reading on the 13th. Valentine's Day celebrations on the 14th, and PTA Movie Night on February 24th. It's a sweet time to be a Panther. Moyac Middle, MMS, had three band students qualify for the Eastern District Middle School Concert Band. Colin McClurney, please forgive me if I didn't say that right, Lilianne Nacurvis qualified for French horn, and Abby Buck qualified for tenor saxophone. They'll be performing this Saturday at East Carolina University in Greenville. Our Nine Weeks Awards Assemblies will be on Friday, February 10th, in our school gym. 7th grade is at 10:00, 6th grade is at 11:30, and 8th grade is at 2:00. The FBLA will sponsor a dance for MMS students on Friday, February 17th, from 6:00 p.m. in the school gym.
Jenna, Jacob, and Tyler, thank you. Next item, field trip requests that were approved by our superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Dobney. Before I get to that, I'll help with one of the announcements that was made. I kind of stumbled over Flat Ralph. And Flat Ralph is a takeoff on Flat Stanley, but they had a flat mouse. And so he was supposed to participate in activities as he traveled around the county with different people. So that's what Flat Ralph was, off of the book. Field trip requests, you've heard about most of these already. The music performances were approved for students that qualified for either all-district or all-state bands and orchestras, and so those are upcoming. Indoor track, they've got a meet in Winston-Salem, and that is the state indoor track meet. And so they'll go to that. And then FBLA from JPNAP and MMS, they're heading to the State Leadership Conference. And so those field trips are approved.
Okay, next item, National Board Certified Teacher Recognition.
Agenda 4.
Oh, school calendar, yep, we amended it. Thank you. School calendar, Mr. Stefanik?
Thank you, Dr. Dobney. I had a discussion in the work session about some calendar options. In case anybody missed it, did have some ice there, a little ice storm, a little bit of snow in January that took away some of our buffer days on the state minimum number of days slash hours that we have to be in session. We talked about getting some of that cushion back, just in case the groundhog was correct. And we're going to see some more cold weather and/or snow or ice. And the consensus, through discussion anyways, was to use the early release day on February 24th, make that a full school day. And then we'll pick up an extra half a day that we can use for our hours on our yearly calendar.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and seconds? Is there any further discussion on the date change? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Okay, now, National Board Certified Teacher Recognition. Christine Hodges, Instructional Coordinator.
Good evening, Board Chair, Mr. Dobney, Dr. Dobney, Vice Chair Ms. Etheridge, Board Members, Student Board Members, and Superintendent Mr. Stefanik. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about National Board Certification, its renewal process, and our district's first National Board Candidate Support Cohort. National Board Certification is the most respected professional certification available in education, and it provides numerous benefits to teachers, students, and schools. It was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. Once teachers earn National Board Certification, they must maintain the standards of an accomplished teacher and go through a renewal process every 10 years. National Board states that renewal is a personal and public statement about your commitment to the profession and to your students. Accomplished teachers recognize that their professional learning and growth never ends. In any given subject and developmental area, best practice and knowledge are constantly evolving. At the same time, changes in technology and policy affect every aspect of education, from the classroom to administration. For those reasons, National Board Certification, like Board Certification in other professions, from architecture to medicine, must be periodically renewed. Two of our educators in Currituck have recently gone through the renewal process, and tonight, I'd like to recognize them. Ann Rogers and Debbie Archer. Unfortunately, Ann could not be with us tonight, but I would like to share that she's been an educator in our district for 20 years. And she also currently teaches at the high school. Her initial certification was in 2006, where she earned National Board Certification in English Language Arts, Adolescence, and Young Adulthood. Debbie Archer has been working with Currituck schools for 20 years as well. She taught first grade for 14 years and is presently teaching second grade at Moyac Elementary School. Ms. Archer initially earned her National Board Certification in 2006 in the area of Generalist in early childhood and renewed in November of 2016. At this time, I'd like to share Ms. Archer's thoughts regarding her National Board experience. And I quote, "I had no idea what I was getting myself into." It was a very overwhelming process. At times, I asked myself, what in the world did I get myself into?" Everyone who goes through the process feels this at some point. What you can't know at the time is how much you gain and how it will become, how it will change the way you view your students and how you teach. The biggest change came in the way of letting go, letting go of trying to control so much of the learning process. One example is having to make tick marks every time I spoke, and how many times my students were engaged in conversation. I had no idea how much conversation I monopolized. Now, if you come into my classroom, you will hear lots of conversations going on, productive, engaged, and yes, sometimes loud conversations. And only after I gave up that control did I realize how much growth takes place when students are actively engaged in rich conversations. This is one of the many reasons I learned going through the process, many things I learned. I could write a dissertation on the benefits of obtaining National Boards. It truly changed how I view and teach elementary education. Congratulations, Ms. Archer, for your achievements and renewal of your National Board Certification. Sure, sure. Currituck has a total of 59 National Board Certified Teachers. Of those 59, 37 are actively teaching in our district. We currently rank sixth in our region of 16 districts. In September of this past year, with the support of Mr. Stefanik and Ms. Kinzel, the district began a cohort to support teachers interested in earning their National Board Certification. It is our overall goal to grow National Board Certified Teachers in our district as well as to provide candidate support while teachers go through this rigorous process. Currently, six teachers in our district are seeking National Board Certification. As a cohort, candidates meet once a month. We analyze the five core propositions and the teaching standards that are the foundations for certification. We invite current NBCTs in our district, including Mrs. Kraft, to offer candidate support in areas of reading and analysis as we strive to become reflective practitioners. These candidates will submit one or two components this May and will continue the process over the course of the next one to three years. With ongoing candidate support, we will grow in our district. Thank you for allowing me to share my passion for National Boards tonight. I strongly believe in the process and the importance of teachers becoming accomplished in their profession. Thank you.
Christie, how long does this process usually take? Once they begin it till they get National Board Certification?
It, it usually takes about three years. The certification, of course, and I believe also, Ms. Rez, you are National Board Certified as well. When both of, the three of us started initially, you could achieve in one year, and they give you about three years to achieve. The process has changed, and it's become a little bit friendlier financially and time. And so teachers have about three years to achieve the certification.
Other questions?
I have a comment. I have a comment, just this past December. Christie made a presentation to our Regional Superintendents Association, and as a result of that presentation, the, the group has decided to provide financial assistance to this program. And so they'll, they'll keep some money on hand over there, and then as districts have teachers moving through the process, as there are some fees for the different levels of the process, they, we call it the RISA. The RISA will reimburse our, our district or the teachers for some of their financial commitment to the program.
That's great.
The support that you're offering the candidates is very, very valuable and very much needed. Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Ms. Archer, congratulations, and tell Ms. Rogers that, you know, congratulations on behalf of the board too.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I'd also like to say that thank you for your commitment to the education, and you with the system on all these National Board Certifications. I really admire that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Dr. Dabney, can I give one more FYI to the board?
Sure.
When I was in the district the last time, the first time, you heard Ms. Jackson's name a couple of times in reports tonight, and she kind of stayed in the background and let other people come up to the podium. But Ms. Jackson and Ms. Hodges, when I was here the last time, they were in middle school. They were middle school students. And now that I'm back, I'm very pleased that they're still involved with our middle school programs as educators, and it's nice to see that they've become very productive educators. And it's nice to see your students grow up and turn out as well as they have.
Really, really. Okay, next item, approval of the 2016 Fiscal Year Audit Report. Pete Catalfamo from Catalfamo &amp; Associates.
Good evening. I'm Pete Catalfamo. Our firm did the Financial Compliance Audit last year. I believe everybody has the audit reporting package, and inside the back is a handout. What I'll do is review the highlights of the report and then go over the handout. There's only seven pages on the audit report I'll review since it's a comprehensive document. The first page in the audit report is page nine. This is the beginning of the Independent Auditor's Report. That's our report on the financial statements. Last year, our report on the financial statements as of June 30, 2016, was an unmodified report, which is the highest report that the board could achieve. Next page is page 25. This schedule is a balance sheet of your governmental funds as of June 30, 2016. The first column is the General Fund, which is also the local current expense fund. And at the bottom, or the bottom of that first column is fund balance. And you would note that your, that the board has approved or has authorized subsequent year expenditures of 1.25 million of that fund balance at June 30, 2016, leaving an unassigned fund balance at June 30, 2016 of $1,182,384. Next page, page 78. This is a finding regarding late deposits at the individual schools. This finding is reported in the previous year, and management has been trying to correct this matter. Management informed us that Finance Department personnel visited individual schools during the year to monitor this matter. So we believe controls were in operation to try to prevent or detect and correct this matter. Management also informed us that they found instances of noncompliance when they visited the individual schools.
Are the instances dropping? Because I know you've reported this like three or four years.
Yeah, our sample for June 30, 2015, I think there was 18 or 19 findings, and they dropped in about half in June 30, 2016. Next page, page 79. This is a financial finding regarding an over expenditure of $6,626 in a functional level of the General Fund. This finding was due to an invoice of $9,749.36 that was received after year end. That invoice was unexpected, so it had not been budgeted. We did note that management made a budget amendment on June 30, 2016, so we believe controls were in operation to try to prevent or detect and correct this matter, had they known about the invoice. Next page is page 80. And we noted on this page that there was no federal award findings in question calls for last year. On page 81, there was one state award finding regarding a payroll overpayment, but we noted management has refunded the overpayment to the grantor agency. On page 83, at the bottom of the page, we note that there was two findings from the year end and June 30, 2015 that management had corrected during the year end and June 30, 2016.
It goes back to the deposits?
Yeah, the first items, the first few items on that page do refer, all of those first three items, let's see, on that page. First three paragraphs on that page all deal with the individual school deposits. The other two findings that were corrected didn't deal with the school deposits.
Could you explain what our policy and what a finding is when they don't deposit the funds?
Okay, your policy is, it also concurs with state, state law. The schools are required, well, all personnel, you know, Finance Department, anybody collecting money at the individual school level, for the schools, they have to turn in their, they have to turn in their money to the secretary or the bookkeeper, and the bookkeeper has to make a deposit. Deposits are required anytime where funds collected exceed $250 or more. Or all deposits are, have to be made irregardless of dollar amounts by the, on the last day of the month. So anything that's, goes over $250 or more that's not made on that day, that's a finding. Any deposits that aren't made at the end of the month, that are made the first, anything past that month, that's also a finding irregardless of dollar amounts.
Do we know if this is like book fairs that, or schools that are far away from the banks? Do we know?
Yes. It, it's several factors like that that get the timelines out of, out of whack. We, we don't have any belief that anybody is intentionally delaying the deposits.
Right. I just knew that some of our schools don't, are not close to, to the banks that we do business with, and also I know when, when book fairs are there, that money can come if they're staying late or, because they stay up in the light. Okay, thank you.
I know at the high school, they make an extra effort to, you know, with athletic events. You know, we finish with a game at 10 o'clock, and the athletic director goes to the bank and makes a drop deposit.
And that's kind of the easy thing, because he's got to go that way.
Yeah, when we look at the deposits, if they're made on time, we'll note that there's indication of a late deposit because usually the bank stamps it at 8:50 a.m. or sometime of that notes. We know it was a late deposit, so that we consider it as being a timely deposit because the bank just doesn't pick out of the night deposit box until the following morning.
When do they consider late? I mean, how, how long? And I know it's over 200, the amount.
Yeah, well.
Two to 48 hour?
It has to be made that day. So anything that's made that, the next day or anything after that day, it's, $250 is a reach, that's a, that's a late deposit. Okay, but we do look at, you know, if there's something on weekends or holidays, we know that that's going to, and there's a night deposit, we know that that's not going to hit the bank until, you know, two days.
Those are not in the report.
No, we look for that. No, so if we see something that's like on a Friday or Saturday, and it's got a bank deposit of Monday, early that morning, the bank didn't pick it up for, you know, two days, so.
But at the same time, if something happens on a Friday or Saturday, and somebody doesn't get to the night deposit, then they wait till lunchtime on Monday.
Then they?
That's a finding.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, anything, yeah, anything beyond like 9 a.m. or thereabouts, we know it's late.
They're working on that.
Oh, yes, the, oh, the Finance Department's doing a great job. They're doing individual building audits themselves, and they're tracking, and then they give a written summary report to me on which buildings are, are doing the best in correcting that.
Yes, yeah, we're working on it.
On page 83, I think that as far as Finance Department, they have to make a report to us, summarize scheduled prior audit findings, and they did report to us that they had visited schools and they had found late deposits.
In addition to this audit, for this item, since it has shown up on audits several years, I was contacted last summer, and we had to present improvement plans and action steps on how we were going to remedy this problem to the state. And so I'm sure I'll get that email again this coming summer. We'll have to put additional action steps in place to, even though we've cut it in half, we'll get it down to zero, and then that'll make us all happy.
So can I just clarify?
Sure.
If I'm understanding correctly, anytime a school collects $250 or more, is that what it was?
Yes, sir.
They have to make that deposit that same day?
That's correct.
Okay, I understand.
Oh, unless it's the last day of the month, it does, it's irregardless of dollar amount. So if it's $10 on that last day of the month, that deposit has to be made that day. That's board policy and state, state law.
So just hypothetically, this would include like lunch money taken throughout the process?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. Yep, thank you.
So we deposit everything every day, each school?
Yes.
Okay.
There are several deposits.
Whether it's $50 or $200, yeah.
Yeah, we try to make, and there are just so many activities going on. That's what may, you know, and we have so many hands, you know, taking care of the money. We're, we're getting everybody to understand the priority, you know, of these timelines. So that's why you see the numbers going down, but we just haven't hit 100% compliance yet.
Would like to point out that auditors are required to look at prior year audit findings. So this is something that we look at each year to see if it's been corrected, and we're required to report whether it's been corrected or not. That's why it's a, it's a repetitive issue.
How many of the deposits, Pete, were small amounts that were made after the first of the month or the last day of the month?
I didn't bring that information with me. I think there was, out of the nine, I think there was, let's see, nine findings. We had nine, nine nontimely deposits out of 70 transactions we tested. I think there was probably about three, there were two or three that were after the month. The others were the 250, didn't meet the 250 rule. And I think one of them didn't meet the 250 or the late, or the last day of the month rule. I think the important thing is, is that all the teachers should turn in the money to the bookkeeper each day because like I think Mr. Stefanik noted that you're collecting money from all different sources. You know, so it could be, you know, some teacher could turn it in time, that's, that deposit made, but somebody else collected the money on the same day, and you went over 250. So it's important to get it turned in every day.
And it is, I mean, over decades, it's a change in philosophy. Because when we were teachers, you know, you did the Scholastic book fair, and students were bringing in money, you put it in your desk drawer, and you waited till you had the whole order, and then you sent the order off yourself to Scholastic, and it never even went through the finance office. Now everything's got to go through the finance office, so you make sure that all those monies get to Scholastic and that they don't end up in the wrong places.
I'd like to review the handout. It's in the back of the document. Page one is our letter of observations and suggestions. And we note in this letter that board employees were very polite and helpful to us last year. Pages two through seven. Management is required each year to provide the auditor or management representation letter. That's what pages two through seven are. And we note in this, management is also responsible for reviewing, approving, and accepting any non-audit services that the auditor performs. And we note in this letter that the finance officer did fulfill those obligations, and she did a pretty good job reviewing the financial statements that we assisted management in preparing. Next pages are pages eight through 11. Next pages are pages eight through 11. These are financial adjustments that we proposed to management, and the finance officer approved, accepted, and posted all the proposed adjustments that we recommended to the books of account. The last two pages are pages 12 and 13, and just Board members have those letters. That's, this is a letter for the Board only. Management does not have this letter. And you'll see subtopics in italics, and the second to the last italic, this is the reason we don't provide it to management. We're required to report any, we're supposed to hit and address each of these specific subtopics, and the second last one is, subtopic is disagreements with management. So if we had any disagreements with management, we'd have to put it in this report, but we know that there were no disagreements with management. That's why we only provide that to the governing board.
Anything else, Pete?
No, sir.
Does the Board have any other questions for Mr. Catalfamo?
I just have a question about page, I believe it's, sorry, I think it's eight through 11. I guess you said these were adjustments that were recommended?
Yes, sir.
I'm seeing numbers to the right and some identification numbers to the left. Can you just give me an idea, a rough idea, what your NIC debt and credit at the top? Can you just give me a general idea of what I'm looking at here?
Okay. Well, let's take item number one on page eight, the top page eight. We identify each journal entry by a number. And the two items right below that, those are budget codes, those are account codes right from your chart of accounts. And to the right, the credits and the debits, we propose that, for instance, that account 2-1120, that's an accounts receivable account. We, the credit is, is a reduction in that account. We're recommending that management correct, reduce that balance by $87.78. And the 2-1160, that's also an accounts receivable account. We're just, we recommend that they reclassify that receivable between two different receivable accounts. Because your books, your books for financial reporting, the financial statements come from your, your trial balance and your general ledger. So, and you have to identify on your financial statements receivables from governmental sources. And that's basically is to adjust those receivables to concur with the financial statements.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, other questions? Okay, we have to approve the audit report. Do we have a motion for approval? Have a motion in seconds or any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Audit report is approved. Now, the next item also deals with the audit report, and it's an amendment to the contract audit accounts. Pete, you want to just briefly tell the Board what that is?
Oh, yes, sir. The audit report was due by October 31, 2016, but my brother and I, we both work on the audit, but I'm the engagement partner. And our mother was ill in September and October, so we were out of town, mostly me, because I'm the engagement partner, so I was out of town in September and October quite extensively. So all this does is extend the due date for the audit contract. There's no change in the audit fee.
There was something that couldn't be avoided, so.
Oh, yes. We're supposed to put in the, in the amendment contract, I don't know if everybody has it. The reason it's late, I'm sorry.
Everybody has a copy.
Okay. Well, note in the second paragraph for the reason we put that there's no reasonable steps that could be implemented to prevent any latest future, because, you know, hopefully you don't want your family member to, you know, become ill. That's, hopefully that's not a recurring event.
Okay, and this does need approval? Do I have a motion for approval of the amendment to the audit contract?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, next item is something that I put in, I should have had an amendment to the agenda, but I guess I can do this anyway. I'm going to be out of town from the 8th to the 14th, and there may be an appeal coming to the Board. And I need a committee of at least three to hear that appeal if I'm out of town at that time. Do I have volunteers? I need three.
I'll volunteer.
8th through the 11th of February?
Yes, I'll be out of town the 8th through the 14th.
Well, I won't be back until probably the 10th, so I don't know what the timeline is. I mean, I can do it if I'm back in town by then.
I, I can do it.
Okay. So we have for sure Will, Janet, and Karen? Okay.
And then if I'm back, I'll let you know.
All right, thank you. Next item, consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, public comment session, which by the way, will move to item D, starting next board meeting. Did anybody sign up for the public comment session? Nobody signed up? Okay, we'll skip to the next item. Information items. Next work session will be March 2nd at the Professional Learning Center at J.P. Naprley College at 4:00. Next Board of Ed meeting will be here, March 2nd at 6:30. Now, Board Member comments. Ms. Etheridge?
I hope everyone has a wonderful February. I was able to visit a few of our schools. I was able to visit Griggs Elementary and read chapter nine of the, I say the Mouse book, that's not correct.
Ralph S. Mouse.
Ralph S. Mouse. And they taped me reading that chapter, and just, the kids are all involved, and they're so happy reading that book throughout our district, and it's just really nice to see them enjoying that. Also, I was able to stop in at the high school. I always stop in, try to stop in during lunch, and see the kids while they're eating lunch, and just walk around and, and talk to them a few minutes, and they too were having, having a great day. They always are at lunch. I should go when they're in the classroom at lunch, they're all happy. And then, of course, at J.P. Knapp, Early College, and everybody was working hard. And I just hope everyone has a happy Valentine's Day. Thank you very much.
Before we leave you, what is tomorrow? Where are you supposed to wear red?
Red, Go Red for Women, heart disease.
Heart disease.
Is promoting heart disease throughout the United States, which is the number one killer of women.
Okay, thank you. I just remembered it was red for tomorrow, so. Okay, Ms. Kraft?
Yes. Yes, this morning, I attended the Currituck Ministers Council for Education, and if you are interested, if that is something that you might be interested in, or your church is interested in, if you get in touch with me, I will put you in touch with the right people. And they are going to be visiting different schools and working with them, giving them some information about ways that they hope they can help the schools, different churches in our community. I did visit all 10 schools this month. I lucked into Barn Hill Animal Preserve presentation at Knott's Island and actually got to hold a baby kangaroo. That was really exciting. I went to the kickoff for Ralph S. Mouse at Moyoc Elementary School, and the principal and the assistant principal rode into the gym on motorcycles. That was very interesting. And attended a basketball game at Currituck County High School last Friday night. So I also wish you a happy February.
Okay, we should term this Board Member and Superintendent comments, since Mr. Spodik usually has something he likes to say. So I'll have him go next.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Dobney. I heard the kangaroo had a diaper on, is that accurate?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, okay. I didn't know kangaroos wore diapers, but you learn something every day, so, you know, kangaroos.
That was your comment?
No, 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 that was just a thought when she mentioned baby kangaroo.
Don't let him comment again.
I was talking about the kangaroo with the principal, and she commented about a kangaroo diaper. I said, okay, I just, I went with it, so. No, I wanted to take this opportunity to highlight the Board and update the Board on our school improvement processes at our buildings. You receive the reports with the school improvement plans at the beginning of the year. Sometime here in February, you're going to get a written summary of mid-year progress reports from each building. We talked about it, and it took us a while to get through the initial reports. So you just heard at the December and January meeting, some of the initial reports. So to turn right around and start the mid-year reports, you guys will be hearing reports about school improvement plans, you know, until May probably. So for the mid-year report, you're going to get it in written form, and then you'll get a final year assessment from each building, along, of course, with the state report card, which is another measure of our, of our efforts. I wanted to highlight J.P. Knapp and the high school, because they have many semester classes. So the state sets up a second testing cycle, and so some of them have taken their end-of-course exams. And some of the areas were listed on those building's school improvement plans as areas that they wanted to target for improvement. And I'm pleased to announce, of the preliminary results that I have, there are six tests, three at each building. And of the six testing areas, five of them showed improvement over last year's year-end averages. Now, I'm aware that this is semester, and we have another semester of students in the classes, but we're also seeing significant improvement areas. Knapp highlighted biology as an area that needed to show some improvement in student achievement, and they have over a 20% difference in proficiency levels between last year's year-end result and this semester. And just like to say, the semester result, 90% of the students achieve proficiency levels or higher on those exams. And so their school improvement process, by targeting that as a need area, you see the kind of payoff that you can get when you look at what we're presenting to students, how we're presenting it to students, and the engagement activities that students have. At the high school, they targeted another area, seen it in the newspaper several times, Math 1. And Math 1 went, and it was well below 50% at, at the high school, and it was just a little bit below 50% for the district when you took Naprley College's percentages in there. And Math 1 semester test came back at 65, I can't read what's after the point, my eyes are starting to go bad, but 65% at proficient or higher. So that's our first set of results, and then we have the second semester to add to that. But since that's showing more than a 25% increase in the percent that was proficient last year with similar results in the second semester, that's what I was alluding to. That'll go a long way for that growth score, you know, getting to the met column for Currituck County High School. So my hat's off to all the schools for the work they're doing in data analysis and action steps with their school improvement plans. And the elementaries and the middle schools are giving me highlights on what's happening on their spreadsheets as they're tracking student progress, and they're excited about, you know, what they're seeing as the students continue to achieve at higher and higher levels. So I wanted to let the Board know that those efforts are paying big dividends so far.
Great, thank you.
Excellent.
Ms. Kretke?
Well, let's see, I, I attended the School Board 101 training in Raleigh, North Carolina. It was a two-day adventure, but I, you know, learned a lot and absorbed a lot. I also attended Griggs Elementary School with Ms. Reynolds and Dallas and Lily. Had a green screen put up on the wall, and they had their camera, and they videoed me reading chapter six of Ralph S. Mouse. And so that was a good experience. Also, while I was there, toured the school with the assistant principal, and I hope I have her name correct, I believe it was Carrie Clapper, maybe?
Chapel.
Chapel, I'm sorry, yep. So anyhow, that was a real nice experience, and I hope everyone continues to do well. And I hope everybody has a great February, and I say, well, God bless Currituck County, and God bless the United States of America.
Thank you. Ms. Rose?
Okay, let's see, I too attended School Board 101 in Raleigh and learned a lot and excited about it. I did stop in to Knott's Island one afternoon, just briefly, to pick up my great niece, and that school is still beautiful. It amazes me how old it is, but it's so well-cared-for. I received a warm welcome and all that good stuff. I went to Shawboro and read chapter seven with Ms. Reynolds and her students, and they did an excellent job of videoing. I was very impressed. And I've spent a lot of time at the high school in the concession stand, so we do have a big ballgame coming up tomorrow night at the high school, where seniors will be recognized. And then on the 13th of February, I believe, we are hosting the first round of the basketball tournament, February 13th. So come out and support our Knights, and I hope everybody has a great February. I'm proud of the schools, happy to hear about this growth.
Yes.
That's wonderful. Keep up the good work, teachers. I know you work hard.
Really, thank you. During this last month, I attended Currituck County Middle School, Currituck County High School, and toured Jarvisburg, and, you know, visited a lot of teachers in many different classrooms. I also attended three varsity girls' basketball games and three varsity boys' basketball games. If you haven't seen them, they are nonstop, one into the other, so. Janet can attest to that. And with that, I hope everybody has a great February, and do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned.